At this time, we'll call September seventh, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. We have Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Lee, the county supervisors. We have Lisa Smith, our county auditor, Luanne O'Keefe, our administrative assistant. We have Nancy Mayfield from the Coca Central Press in the room with us, and we have David Bryan, our Jackson County engineer. So, take it away, David.
A short agenda, two permits, and then an update on some projects that are proceeding. First permit is for central Iowa power. We work in South Fork Township, section twenty. They're doing a new overhead line across thirty-fourth street. And connecting to the new alliance substation there off of sixty-four. I recommend approval of that one. And then Coca Valley Electric is doing some work in Bellevue Township, section eleven. On Seabirding Road, doing some fiber optic cable work. So we recommend. I've been checking.
I make a motion to approve the right-of-way utility permits as presented.
Second. A second to approve central Iowa power and the Coca Valley Electric permits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
So the four hundred street bridge is over Lux Creek is, Taylor is making progress on it and moving along. The hundred eighty eighth street bridge. Trader started work last week, they driven pile and proceeding on doing that work. Have some more piles to drive. And the culvert on four hundred seventy-fifth Avenue that collapsed in the spring shekel should be there this week. That's over the Copper Creek. And that should be done in two to three weeks, so that should make residents out there very happy. I'd like Mr. Cundy to know and think so. I presume that.
Yeah, district. So we do have the culvert then.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we showed you proceeding, I didn't, I wouldn't think he started without it.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, I heard they started over a hundred eighty-eight.
Yeah.
So a hundred eighty-eight, is that the same length of bridge, sixty foot?
Yes, might be a little bit long, but generally not changing too much of the profile.
Send a text message to the neighbor right there, and I got a thumbs up, so I, oh, always good. A little. Contact with them anyways over there.
Okay, Lisa, did you want to do? To hear your business?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one board proceedings as written by Honorger Smith. And authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve. Second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Motion needed to accept place on file under the right to share the future of the county recorder's reported fees collected for the month of August twenty twenty-one. In the amount of thirty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
It was down a little bit.
Was, yeah, it was.
Compared to the other ones, but. I would rate forty-two, I think it was closer to fifty. I was thinking it was a little over fifty. I would make a motion to approve the. Recorder's report fee as presented.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
And that's all that I have for the board today.
I see they did have twenty-five passports.
Check and see if I need to take the transfer to actually say.
I was gonna say, I can tell the river state is still busy.
Yeah, they are busy.
It doesn't take long for a house to get sold. I noticed that Franklin Davis's house there, right across the street from the church that. Person's been, the guys have been working on that for at least two years. It said, it said sale pending. Marilyn wanted to go see it, since we drove by it, you know, all the time watching them do the, the work, and she says, I'd really love to see what that looks like inside, so she said. I think I'll have Linda make an appointment for us to go see. And I went by, I came home and I said, hey, the place is sold, sale pending on the sign. So I guess we won't be seeing the inside, unless it's somebody we know that bought us.
Yeah.
So. Uh, Luanne, do you wanna?
Sure, ma.
This time, we're joined by Luanne O'Keefe, our administrative assistant.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, calendar, tomorrow morning, September eighth, at ten AM, is a zero to five in sixty minutes meeting by Zoom for Jack. Thursday the ninth, at seven AM, is a Bellevue hometown pride meeting by Zoom for Mike. At ten o'clock is an Iowa DHS council meeting by Zoom for Jack. And three o'clock, it's a Grantwood scenic byway meeting in Bellevue for Larry. And four o'clock that afternoon is a local emergency planning committee meeting by Zoom for all of you.
We're in Bellevue.
I think it's the brewery. Friday, September tenth, at ten AM, is Southern Judicial Department of Corrections in Davenport for Larry. And also be my Google lead if you want to do that. Monday, September thirteenth, at seven thirty AM, is an early childhood Iowa executive board meeting by Zoom for Jack. And eleven o'clock is a community services of Eastern Iowa meeting by Zoom also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September fourteenth, at nine AM. And. Then we were supposed to have a Coca Chamber leadership program going that day, I haven't heard where that's at. And at four o'clock that afternoon is a Coca River watershed management authority executive meeting by Zoom for Larry. In your packets, you have the contract from Growth Services. To renew the contract for the maintenance on the Jackson County Care Facilities. A water treatment facility that we do every year, so I'm looking for approval of that contract and to have the chair sign.
Make a motion to approve. I was second, I have the chair sign. With a motion and a second to approve the Growth Service LLC contract, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
You have the original?
I have the original. And you want to talk about the Isaacs nine-one-one radio system?
So, um, our last nine-one-one meeting was last week, and Lynn was not here, couldn't be present, he had a special council meeting in Bellevue. So they kind of brought up a proposal, I mean, they were in here one a month ago, and made a proposal that. Where we wanted to go with this radio system to update it. Of course, we've been doing it for a long time, kicking the can down the road, but. They thought now would maybe be a good time and have some buy-in from, from, from the supervisor, of course, for the, for the peace act, they call it over here, the control station and. And with other municipalities in, in Jackson County, so. Kind of come with a proposal of the percentages of how they broke down compared to how they pay for the nine-one-one now, so. I did send that out to an email, that's the kind of, of a proposal where they're starting. So the nine-one-one board will have a special committee formed of, of three or four different people that'll come. Come here and give a presentation, and they'll also go to city councils, each, each town, try to. Get this on the move here, if we can get the city councils. We talked about having one large meeting, we didn't think that would work out best, so. Each council of each, each town, if we can get there. Present that and, and go from there. One thing I forgot to mention, and, and that was the hospital to them. How we could get them involved with this also. On a percentage basis, maybe.
Well, they certainly know how many calls come in from the hospital.
Yeah.
And I would think that they could somehow or other, it seems to me that they should be a partner in the whole process. And they haven't ever contributed before, but I think that it's important that. We at least have a dialogue with them and let them know that, you know, give them the figures and the numbers of the. Calls that come in for hospital services and see if we can do something to get them to participate.
Well, we thought now would be a good time, you know, maybe we could use some of our ARP money for that. Of course, that's a, that's a safety issue, so.
It's allowed.
It's allowed, yes.
Well, we're way behind the system, you know, or we can't, like, they had a fire just across the line. Dubuque County, just north of Santanata, so the road starts in Jackson County, that's where we put the new bridge in last year, I think. The road starts in Jackson County, ends in Dubuque County, but then. We weren't on the radio, same radio system, so lucky enough that Lynn was there, and he has some of these seven hundred megahertz radios in his car, in his vehicle, so. They were able to communicate with Dubuque Fire and Rescue, and that worked really well, so. We're approaching this a little different than Dubuque and Jones County, where they spent nine to ten million dollars for towers. We are lucky to have enough, we have three, it's like state towers in Jackson County because our topography. And our terrain, of course, but we're still, we're still have some dead spots, Subul, Santanata and such, I mean, you've seen their maps before.
Absolutely.
We're gonna go with law enforcement first. And then also try to maybe implement into this. Proposal of how we move forward with fire and EMS going forward, so. As we have to sit down and scratch our heads and see how we can move forward that, we're gonna go with a, try a repeater in the car type system, which. Which the state highway patrol does.
Right.
So that's, that's where that's at, I don't know if they have any questions, I can try to answer them, but, you know, Bob. Bob was pretty good at that, he's been at that control center over there for a lot of years, and he's studied that radio system up and down, he goes to the meetings and. He's pretty trim, and Brad Bowles are pretty sharp with that.
So do they have a timeframe as to when they would really like to have this all completed? I know it needs to be soon, but I think that, you know, since we can use our funds for that.
And we have funds.
You know, and, and the cities all have funds too that they receive, so. I think that if we can, if, I think it's smart for them to go to the city council meetings. And kind of explain everything to them, but I also think it's important that we make an appointment to talk to the hospital board as well. But in order, before, before that happens, we do have to have our facts and figures.
So they are supposed to get that all, that little group is supposed to get that all. This is what the presentation will be, and they're gonna come and present it to us. And we're gonna go around and present it to the councils, and hopefully that will be soon. I believe we'll probably have to have some, maybe some special sessions. Some councils only meet.
Around every two weeks.
Yeah. You know, so. We'll do the best we can there.
So there was an incident this weekend. Between Subul and Bellevue, and a slew of boat accidents.
Yeah.
And what was coming out, honestly, they didn't know how, where it was or how to get there. So when a nine-one-one call comes in, that hangs on your thing, why isn't that getting transferred to the rescue squad, or? I think Grant County actually answered it, by, from Illinois. But I haven't heard more on it. So apparently.
Talked about it before you got here, Nancy was, Nancy was kind of similar, what it meant, so.
But yeah, it was in a good paper too, I don't know how the nine-one-one call went out, I guess, I don't know where it went to first.
I don't know.
I don't know, I'll get there. Hard to say whether they were on the Illinois side or the Iowa side of the river.
I think the DNR gentleman told me that. That, that both boats made it back to Subul, and that's when they got involved, they were, DNR actually wasn't at the scene, so I don't know who actually. But he said they were able to get to, to the.
Back to town.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Part of the confusion there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of backwaters down in there.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be nice if we could get some upgrading, you know, with this and work some of our. Funds for safety in on that and move forward.
You know, I got stuck in the mountains a few years ago on Colorado. I called the local police station, and it says, well, where are you, and I'm like, hmm, not really sure. It started giving some points, and they did. And they said, okay, hang up, call nine-one-one, and that'll ping your location, and we can tell you, and I did that, and they told me where I was at. Helped them, and didn't make a difference to me.
Oh, hail Mary.
Adventures of traveling.
Okay, as far as, it's not business for this, but last week, the Economic Alliance. Had a meeting, and we, we reviewed the applications that we've received to replace Nick's position. And we had, I think, about eleven or twelve applications, and we narrowed it down to six. And we are going to start those interviews tomorrow afternoon or evening at six o'clock. And interview those by Zoom. We thought the first one we would do by Zoom, and then after that, we will. Narrow it down further and then have face-to-face meetings. But we had, we had applications from California, Colorado, Utah. The one that I was amazed about. Was somebody that, it gave his work history. Switzerland, Australia, New Zealand, all of these different places, and. He was a master cabinet builder, I thought, okay. Great application, but, but we did have some really good people that had, had applied, and so we're gonna do those interviews. And Becky was a part of the process, and I told David that. I thought it would be to our advantage to have her sit in on the Zoom meetings, and. I don't know, I haven't talked to him, I got an email saying that they were gonna start tomorrow afternoon at six o'clock. But I haven't had a chance to talk to him, I went and talked to Becky this morning to tell her that's when we were gonna have the interviews. And I don't know if we're doing all six of them tomorrow night, that's gonna be. A, a busy evening if we try to do all six of them, but sensor by Zoom, maybe that can work out, but. If you allow a half hour for the interview, and then we usually, when we interview here, we allow ourselves about fifteen minutes afterwards to discuss the interview. So, anyway, we'll see, see how that works out, but.
So. If that's a Zoom interview. Can anybody jump onto that Zoom meeting, or they?
No, no.
Strict.
Yeah, I would hope that not everybody's gonna get the, the connection.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would think that's confidential between each interviewer, anyway, each applicant, anyway. Well, that's, it's encouraging to think or to know that we have some good applicants that applied and. And it's kind of assuring that Dave was still there and knows, been around. The town a few times, so.
Yeah, and the, the one thing, I did go and talk to Sarah last Friday. About the employee of record that we've talked about. Because of the health insurance and the benefits that the county gives, and she was gonna do some investigating. And I told her about, you know, Miranda with Muscatine, and. Well, Peggy now is an employee of record with Clinton County for ECI. And that Lori is an employee of Scott County, and we contribute to their benefits as a part of the twenty-e with. With that group or the memorandum, understanding, I guess it's called. So anyway, I said that, you know, we need to find out what we can or can't do. Because obviously, if we are able to provide benefits. Then the starting salary can certainly be lower than, than if we can't provide benefits.
So how was it set up before, as a stipend, or insurance then, or?
Well, they would actually, if, if we do of an employee of record, they actually are an employee of the county that is their employer of record. And so they would become unemployed, their checks would come from the county, and the benefits would come and be the same as what we receive in the county. That's how it is with Muscatine and with Scott and with Clinton County for those employees. But the thing that. Sarah was going to have to check out is the fact that this is a nonprofit. And she didn't know how that worked with, with the laws. So she was gonna check that out, and I'm supposed to visit with her today after our meeting today to see if that's possible or if it's not. But then if it is possible, then we as a board are gonna have to decide. If we're willing to do that. So.
Yeah.
That's the information I have on that.
In order to offer that position, and, yeah, we'll have to decide that for a bit.
Yeah, we will. Because obviously, when we're getting ready to make an offer to somebody, we have to, we have to know if, if there are gonna be benefits included, so. I will keep you informed.
Good.
Hey, thanks, Luanne. At this time, we're joined by Beth Gerlach, the Jackson County Treasurer, to discuss possible action on office changes.
So, right now.
So where do you want to move to?
Yeah, right.
We have the basement, you can go.
Right, we can have everybody go down.
Yeah.
Um, just the temporary plexiglass that Marty had installed. Is not functioning like we want it to, we can't hear people through it. And people keep knocking their hands because they don't have space, counter space to write on, so those are the two main issues that we're trying to work on right now. Which. I have an estimate from Alpha Graphics, because what I'm thinking will work best is free-hanging plexiglass. So just hanging down from two chains, three separate pieces that have just small connectors. So there's space in between each one, space on top and space below to sit, let sound through. But still has the, you know, protective barrier for the employees.
A whole bunch of those. Nice ones.
Yeah, and that's actually what Lisa and I had talked about, so, because that's. Number one, what we wanted to get done was just change the plexiglass out, but then, secondly, the counter. The counter. Replacement basically was also something I was wanting to look into, and I know she had mentioned there's possibilities there that.
Absolutely, yes.
Work for our.
Lots and lots and lots of possibilities.
That's what I said, I mean, we, I went and talked to Beth on Thursday, and I said, you know, after we've done our visit up there. I thought there was a lot of potential, I did ask her if she thought that it was important that she needed drawers and. And everything underneath her countertop, and she said no, which makes this even better, because with what we're thinking, she wouldn't have those, those drawers underneath. Most of the drawers that are there right now are empty because we're scanning. So we used to save all the titles and title work and everything in those drawers, but now that we're scanning, we don't have to save those anymore.
So you can previously talk about a dropdown or extending that out?
Yes.
Or dropdown somehow, so they can sign it, have a place to sign, and then?
Well, do you plan on hanging that plexiglass back farther, would that, would that help the situation too, or?
Um, well, the same spot that it's in now, so the gate can still close.
Okay.
Because that's also.
So if we do a new counter though. We could move a new counter forward. That would help, and still leave the door where, a gate where it's at.
Yeah, we'd have to see what mechanically will work for us, but that, I think I did, she showed me a picture of something, and I'm like, wait, there's hanging plexiglass. On two chains, just like the exact same picture that I showed Marty, so. And that's what this estimate is for, is just the plexiglass.
So this is from a different company?
Yeah, Alpha Graphics, it's two hundred and fifty-five dollars or something like that.
No, there's certainly some up there, maybe Marty can get some measurements and.
Well, and that's what I thought, I did talk to Marty about some of the things that we wanted right now, and I said that we would take, have Beth go along. Take a look as far as what's there, and try and see if we have a, a good fit. Or if we would need to make a modification of some sort.
That can be cut to.
I, I personally like the, the whole thing when they have this lower desk area, that would be.
Oh, yeah.
I, that, I mean, for us, that would be perfect.
Well, it's, there's certainly potential up there.
There is.
To find something that would work.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's very nice stuff, too.
Yeah. So.
Amazing. Absolutely amazing.
No, and I think he could, we could probably get in there anytime, as long as we let him know, when Janet's around or somebody around that can take us.
Well, Bob or Janet, we both, yeah.
Yeah.
Or we could find out from Amber downstairs, because I, I called them and told them that.
Okay.
They could make an appointment to go and look now to see what's available. And I did tell Janet to tell Amber that some of the things that we had marked that we would like. We might not need all of those things. So that there might be some things for her to consider there as well.
According to John, he didn't think a lot of the, some of the kitchen equipment. For, for the jail purposes, but I said, well, some of that we, we marked, but. Together, we built, really interested in the cooler and the freezer, I believe.
I believe.
That would be a shame to, to let that go.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody should.
I'm just thinking that, you know. I really wish we could get the reason. And you took the measurements of it, and I, it seems to me that somehow or other, they should be able to meet that work.
I would think so.
I had just talked to Marty about this specifically, and then had a conversation with Lisa afterward, so he suggested I get on the agenda just to talk to you guys about what I was wanting to do. Before I do anything, so.
I'd say if you could move forward with, get a permit, go take a look and maybe get Marty.
Yeah, see if I can make some of the measurements work with the hanging plexiglass, or have it cut. You know.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of their counters all have that hanging, so, I mean, it's a multitude of different sizes.
Yeah, so check that out first, but I do think that's gonna solve the sound barrier issue, and if we could get the countertops to work, it would make a big difference for people, so.
And those countertops are modular in pieces, so, I mean, when you look at it there, you can still break it down and.
Take one out.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of possibilities.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, so I think that's a. Good plan to go with. Yeah, I know Marty's gone right now, so when he returns today, let's try and coordinate with him. Because I do want him to go pick up a few things right now. Immediate need.
When we're done today, I will call Janet or Amber to see if they made arrangements to go up.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if you could go at the same time.
Right.
So that they don't have to keep going back up to the hospital to let us in, so. I'll see what she has to know, come over and let you know what she says.
I would think Marty could have some measurements go down with him.
Yeah, we have measurements already from this, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Be in touch, all right. Okay, looks to me like our work session on personal matters is at nine forty. And ten o'clock is Law Enforcement Center. And I don't know that we have anything to discuss about budget, do we?
But I'm aware.
You have another visitors, I don't think you've done the visitors.
Do we have any visitors that wish to address the board? And last week, I don't think anybody had any meetings, I did go over to Nick's. Going away party, or whatever you want to call it, and it was nice, and there was quite a few people there. And.
Are we on unfinished business?
Yep.
So as far as the jail project goes, I, we had talked last week that I was gonna call John, and John. I got a hold, finally got a hold of John, and he's working with Alex. Our assistant engineer up in Buchanan, with the layout on the lot of the buildings, and he emailed me that, and I forwarded that to you. And he's working with the city. As far as getting a variance for the setback, because the Sally Port's gonna be a little closer to the street than what we expected. So with, with the hill and get the parking to the east side of it, so. We talked about the building. He said, basically, once we get this laid out, we can have Alex come down and set the stakes. Decide what size building that we want to pursue, and basically just move forward with it like we did with our county buildings and with our local contractors. He really doesn't have anything to, well, he can have input on it, of course.
I looked at the ambulance building and that other one up there and. They're all finished out on the inside. And I think the cost to take it down would be.
Yeah.
Would be prohibitive. And they've got some age on them. So probably better off to go then.
Do you know how much the variance is? How much it costs?
I don't think there's cost to it. Or maybe twenty-five dollars.
The reason I ask is because in the email that I received over the weekend, John made mention that he was gonna work with me as far as the fee. And that's fine. I mean, I'm, but we have claims next week, so I wanna make sure that we get a claim in so we can pay next week so we can move forward. So I'll, I'll contact the city then and just see.
I would say Mallory maybe or.
Okay, alright, yeah.
West of work, Scott.
Yeah, okay. I'll just get ahold of the city then if you don't know.
And then he was also talking about they were. Considering making us put a sidewalk in there. So there's no sidewalk on either side of us there. So I, I think, he thinks we could come to an agreement to say, hey, if you ever. If the neighbors to the east or the north and south of us ever develop to the point that we put a sidewalk, then we'll, we'll build that in, yeah.
I don't know how south of us they could possibly ever put a sidewalk in.
Yeah, there is a, and there is a trail across the street. We should have sidewalks to get. To the street so you cross and get on the other.
He's still planning on bidding the project and both projects in November, apparently. Sooner, better. Well, I said, we'd like to keep moving forward here, yes. Yeah, he said the steel, yeah, I said that if we get that going, we can do that. They can do that in the winter time too, you know, put that up, show it up. He says steel has not come down much. Some lumber prices have, but.
That's what I had as our biggest concern.
What did we ever, we did not approve the NEI three agreement yet, did we? With Sarah's?
No.
I mean, I thought she had a couple of good points. That need to be put back on the agenda or how we, where do we proceed with that?
It should be put back on the agenda. And ever, cause she, Sarah was going to send the information that she was concerned about with the agreement. And to my knowledge, we haven't heard that.
She was gonna take that back to?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I think she expects us to take it back.
Well, I thought that she was, it was her questions and she would follow through. I will ask her about that when I go up and talk to her about the employee of record.
Well, and. Otherwise, Jack, we can make these changes per her suggestions and send it back to them and see if they'll. I think, you know, there are minor changes. I mean, this, yeah, it's, it's, as a, at a county request, they can. A, a report, send us a report. Well, maybe they should just automatically report every quarter then.
I think so.
Only had a couple of changes in there. And do you ever decide on what they're gonna do down there for parking?
That was my next topic.
Okay.
Um, Lisa and I had a, a phone conversation with Renell Clark about the parking. And, um. They do need some additional parking, she said, especially when everything is in full bloom down there. So, I don't know if you had a chance to drive down, but I did drive down and went around the building. And, um, it appears to me, um, on the north side, there is an area. Back behind the building where it's fenced around, um, towards the building. It looks to me like you could easily park three or four cars there. And then across the drive, there's probably a place where you could park ten cars there. Um, no, on the east side.
On the east side.
And there would be room behind it too, if you wanted to park behind it. But it seems to me that even if we took the area that's to the. Uh, west and north side of the building. That we could easily take that grass away and put some gravel there if we wanted to. Or, as we talked before, and, 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 um, Renell said that. The senior center, theirs, their, their concrete goes clear to the street. Theirs at New View doesn't go clear to the street, so they don't have that additional parking. From where the, the, the parking lot stops and the street starts. And if that was filled in with concrete, then they would obviously have several more because she said. The senior center, they can have cars in front of the building and then they can have cars facing each other. And then they can have another row in the front because it's concrete to the street. So, um. We have to decide what we wanna do.
I think she's asking for an additional seven parking spaces.
Yeah.
Is what.
So, we talked about taking out, I did drag down there a couple of weeks ago when I first mentioned it. Are we taking out that mulberry tree or that?
Yes.
I mean, it seems kind of.
Yes. But I think the question then is if. The real question that is during the winter, Marty is afraid that when he blades that, that he's gonna blade the gravel out.
I've heard that.
Yeah. Yeah.
To be honest, I, I mean, I, I got the concrete. But I guess where do you want it? Where, where do we decide to put it?
Well, I think that's a decision we have to make.
So is she okay with it being on the north side? Is there a door, a door back there from the access?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so they can get in from that side.
It's on, it's on the west side towards the back of the building. There is a door.
To me, it makes sense for them to park back there, but that's just so the front is open to the public. If we can put it on the backside in concrete, I think it'd be fantastic.
Well, why don't I go down there and have Renell go outside and I'll show her what. Where I thought they could have some additional people park. And then, we can always look at the front part if we wanna extend the concrete to the street.
What is less concrete on this, by the street or behind?
I think behind would be less concrete.
And they can still park on the street also.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, there is street parking on both sides.
I think it needs to be concrete on that gravel. Let me just.
I mean, for the price of it.
Well, obviously, that would be best, but.
Are you having Marty's input on that there down there too, or what?
Um, I haven't at this point.
That would be my next question is, we're sitting here September seventh. The door is closing on concrete.
Whoa. Yeah, I mean, either or, they could get by this, this year with it if that's the case, but. If you get somebody to do it, I mean, it's no different than that. The project we got going at the care facility. I did go up there and part of that concrete replacement's done, but. It didn't seem like they were moving real fast on that either, but. Half?
Yeah.
No.
No.
The west. The west, or the north side of the building where the, where the chiller is, that old infill block is in there. It was formed up on the, by the back door. And there was some reroute in there. And I actually, when I was there and. I was a little concerned that there was no cones or taper. So, um, the stumps, the trees are all down, the stumps are all out. That's all done. So. I did stop back there last night, see that the stumps were ground out and. I did walk around the building near the couple of residents. Outside, so I just left it alone. I'll stop back up there and check. Make sure that, that keeps moving along.
Yeah, okay.
It's nice where it's done.
Yeah. Well, I'll go down and wait with Renell and, um, we'll come up with what. Their priority is and where they would like to have it. And then we'll discuss it next week.
Sounds good. And you're gonna talk to Sarah about the contract?
Yeah.
When I put the changes in and send it back.
I'll talk to Sarah about NEI three A and I will talk to her about the, um, employee of record.
Pouring concrete on the trail of personal.
On the, going to the marsh.
Should be setting the bridge here pretty soon. Where are they working now?
Traders.
Yeah.
They're out at a hundred eighty-eight, then it's four hundred. And they're up at, uh, Fillmore, yeah, too. I drove by there a couple of weeks ago. They're still.
Okay, it might be a little bit. It's kind of coordinate with their changing the wires and stuff out there, the high line wires. So when we do that.
Yeah.
Systems through there. And take it down and replace it. And when that comes down, then they need to come in and set the bridge for their cranes and stuff. Plan.
Okay, is there anything else? Talking about our trip last week. And your comment, um, there were things that we wanna get right away. Um. What's right away? And if we get things right away, um, what are we going to do the, kind of with the stuff that we might be replacing?
I, I would like the ice and water machine right away. I would like the two silver, um, message boards right away. I know when we talked about the whiteboard. If we take one or both of those would be right away. And depending on, I haven't looked because. Just with the holiday and such and being off.
Sure.
But I, I would look to see what we would do in the employee's lounge. Um, as far as making some adjustments there.
Sure.
That would, I'd like to see that right away. Um, the other thing I guess is, do we take some chairs and store them for now? So we have them. Is that right away?
Could be.
Yeah.
I think it'd be nice to get that conference table and chairs and that. System for Zoom with the big screens and stuff.
We need to visit with Bjorn to see what is going to work and what isn't.
Well, I think he did wanna have Bjorn come up there and look at what they have and see what would or might. Might, what might or might not work.
Yeah, Bjorn's on vacation this week.
Sure.
So, nothing will get done this week. But I think we can kind of get coordinated and get a list and maybe next week.
And there's a, a couple pallets of carpet, two by two squares. So we can do the floor down there. Is that something we wanna do or not?
What's the board's wishes?
We're.
Down conference room.
Right when you were leaving, when you left last Tuesday, Bob talked to us about he had. Um, a lot of, I don't know how much, so we would have to measure. Uh, to see what.
Cause these are just carpet squares. He, he thought there would.
No, no, no carpet down there now, is there?
No.
I would not put carpet down there.
In the conference room, there is.
Yeah.
It's. It's gently.
This would be the community room.
The community room does not.
I don't like the cleanup vacuum or something.
Yeah, I mean. If anything, we would replace the conference room. That carpet could be replaced.
I mean, is it, I mean, you know what it's like when you get water in there or we have water in there in the carpet and you gotta have it cleaned and you gotta have it.
And has, has that conference room ever been wet? I know that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, the thing is, a mop and a bucket goes a long ways on a hard floor, but.
Yeah.
With our issues in the parking lot. Yes, that has happened.
But you talked about the conference room, the community room, that's gotten wet too.
I'm pretty sure that has been.
I know that, yeah, I, I'm not sure.
There is a window in there too, yeah.
Yeah, there is a window there.
But traditionally, that's not affected by the parking lot.
No.
So is that window mess with the screen thing? Or would we reverse that and have the screens on the inside wall? The double TV screens with that table?
We're, okay, I was thinking about the window when you're talking about screens.
Uh, there again, we have to get with Bjorn to see what will work and how we can install it.
Okay.
It's a nice setup.
It is a nice setup, you know, with the speaker microphone that you can use like Company CIA is the same type of system.
And we're still thinking about changing and bringing in a conference table for the employee's lounge, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's another one there for them.
Yeah.
There were two of them.
Yeah.
The smaller ones. What we're talking about. They have the conference room up there and it's a, a beautiful table that's. Oh, I wanna say twenty foot long at least, it's an oval with nice padded chairs and rollers and. Two screens, both of them doubles the size of that, that are tied into a complete system for doing Zoom meetings and everything and. Just be a perfect thing for.
We need to set up our conference room.
Yeah.
Community room downstairs for that, that would work out much better for us if we could do that.
My question I have then is, are we. Taking down the tables that we have in that room and going to just a one table with chairs around it?
That's what I see, yeah.
Okay.
I think you can still have tables around the outer edge or chairs around the.
Maybe on one end, the back. I don't see it on sides.
So, so are we saying that the conference table that's downstairs in the basement, is that a get right away?
Oh, no, I'm back to the community room.
Okay, so that, so that big conference table that we're talking about, is that a get right away?
I would say certainly could, yeah.
I mean, we have to certainly prioritize where Marty's going at a certain given time.
That's, that's where I was headed.
I would like. To get him on this. I think he's close to having our lane door done, is that correct?
I know that he has spent some time in there.
But I would certainly like to see if he could get access to.
The pipes?
He was gonna experiment, I thought he was gonna be up there this morning, maybe to pick up his skid loader and fill in the, or they ground the stumps out.
I received an email this morning and said that he left at eight o'clock. So, but he would return sometime today and didn't.
Well, there is a lot of outside stuff that needs priority before we start doing stuff like this.
I think between, we need to probably come up with a list of what's, what's now and what's soon. Because we do rely on Marty and we're gonna have to try and figure out if that table can be taken apart and how do we transport it here. Yeah.
But how many people it's gonna take to carry it downstairs?
Yeah, we gotta figure.
Downstairs.
I didn't look underneath, but it has come.
Yeah, the legs would probably come off.
Well, now that we have a little different situation in the front of the courthouse, makes it a little bit difficult too. Um, I see that there's a. It looks to me like there's going to be a light fixture about in the center of where we would.
Back in?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Natural.
They'll cut out and now a light fixture.
That's what it looks like to me. So when we talk about trying to get.
Several times.
Well, yeah, no, actually, you can come up here to the intersection, just drive down the sidewalk and drive off the other side. That's the best way to do that. Alright, we should, the sidewalk should be big enough to.
Yeah, I think there's a significant sidewalk, so isn't there?
That'd be handy, Ken.
What I'm saying right now with the construction, take a look. I guess we'll take a look before.
Yeah.
I think that there's a.
I think we have to prioritize what we wanna get now.
Yes.
So we have some idea.
Yes.
And then we have to decide what we're gonna do with what we have, that we might not be needing after we get replaced.
I don't know what to do with the other stuff that's up there. I mean, I guess we can store some of it out there, but I feel better if it's in our. Building here. Somewhere else.
But I think it would be, I think it would be advantageous for us to, the next time John comes. To take him back up and show him what we want to get and what we wanna do with it.
Well, and I need to measure to see if I can use those, not that I'm gonna take all of them, but if I can take those silver. Um, storage units, the, I don't know what, the wire shoving units.
Yeah, yeah.
I would be very interested in putting that in the election room to get all of our equipment up off the floor in case we'd ever have a.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's right.
So, yeah. And I would hate to have, not that I'm trying to be. Trying to take everything we can, but those are very nice racks. And I think we would be able to use a lot of.
Oh, absolutely. Between that and the kitchen?
Yeah.
Was Brent up there the first time we went up? No, whatever. So he's never been up there?
He has never been up, he's never been with me. How's that? I've been up there several times and Brent has never been with me when I've gone.
Well, I think that maybe when, is he coming in this morning? Well, I think that maybe when, is he coming in this morning?
Supposed to be.
Yeah, I thought he was coming at nine forty. And it's now nine fifty and he's not here. But, um, uh, I think we need to show him some of the stuff and what we anticipated we would be able to use it for. Like in the, in the, um. Deputy.
Yeah.
Area, those desks.
Their workstations and.
Workstations, I think would be perfect.
Either the, either the plastic ones.
Um, is Brent? Okay, so, um, I'll let you know when we're ready.
So I think you certainly need to take him up there with Ben or when they go up, he can make it or.
Yeah, absolutely. I think he needs to see, I think he needs to see what the potential is.
Yeah.
So we can easily, I mean, we talked about the forty chairs for them. For the, for the meeting room or training room.
You'll see.
Yep. So.
Brent's in Becky's office or whatever you want to.
Oh, there's lots, lots and lots of potential there.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else? Are we making any decisions on this nine forty or it's just says work session, so? Um, are we ready to adjourn and move into the work sessions?
I don't have anything else. I would make a motion, we adjourn.
With a motion and a second to adjourn, opposed in favor. I motion carry.